Items are very straightforward. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And any new councillor business? Yes, councillor Mountinson?
I believe Sue.
Hello?
Hey Sue, sorry.
Yes.
You want me to go first or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Then Sue there.
Yeah, I'm not sure who else is going to speak to what. But certainly there has been a lot of... Good morning, your worship, I'm sorry. But, Mr Chair. But there have been quite a few things going on in the community lately that I believe it is necessary or good to report to council on. I'll leave the COPA convention for Terry, but I attended solar days over the weekend. A good event to make people aware of all the solar initiatives going on in Dawson Creek. Oh gee. I attended the annual meeting of, well, one of the regular meetings of Northern Health held at the Best Western in Dawson recently. Some of the topics for discussion were physician recruitment and the great lengths that they're going to recruit physicians in Dawson Creek. And also another couple of interesting things were the, a couple of interesting topics were the additions to be made to the Dawson Creek Hospital. So lots of interesting stuff going on there. Also, I really wanted to reiterate, as I have in a past council meeting, my appreciation and enjoyment of the Crescent Park BBQ that was held a week ago. I think that those sorts of events are very, very good in council. Well, our organization ought to expand on them because they're great, not only just for engagement about the expansion of a park, but naturally the topic of conversation leads to places other than that. It's just a good community engagement event. I imagine the ends achieved are much cheaper than some of the other ways of engaging the public, so very good. Good summer.
Councillor Kenny?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Yeah, I'm in Vancouver today at the Economic Development Association of BC annual summit. But I wanted to make sure that the council looked at having a person in the election, upcoming election of UBCM. And I would like to nominate councillor Schuman for the position as Director at Large. And the reason for that is that councillor Schuman has been on the NCLGA's board and has been involved in his second term. I thought that she would be a good candidate for representing and not being the Director at Large for UBCM. So I'd like to put that nomination forward.
Thank you, Sue.
He, councillor McFadden?
Is that a motion?
Ah, yes, it would have to be a motion. So move, Sue is moving that, and are you prepared to second that?
Yes, I am.
All those in favor? Carried. Okay, good luck with that venture. Anything else, Sue?
I'm sorry, you're a little broken up.
Yes, I just said, anything else?
No, thanks for today.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Yes, councillor Wilber.
As councillor Melk said, there was lots going on, so I think we've all attended kind of some of the same things. But what I wanted to mention was Wendy Brown is starting her last leg of her run for recovery, which is raising funds and awareness for the Drug and Alcohol Treatment Centre in the North. And she should be in Dawson Creek and leaving from City Hall at about four o'clock and heading to Fort St. John, and that's the last leg of her run. So I think in total it's 357 kilometres or something that she's running. To date, she's raised just over $20,000. So anybody that could be out there, I'm hoping will be done for the day by then, but it'd be nice to cheer her on and wish her well.
Where is she running from, she?
She started in Fort St. John to Hudson Hulk, Chatwin to Dawson and back to Fort St. John.
Okay. Councillor McFadden?
I attended the COPA flying over the weekend. It was a very good event. The weather held off. They didn't quite have as many folks as they thought due to the bad weather in southern Alberta and over in Saskatchewan. And I, along with a couple of their councillors, went to the Northern Health Board Meeting that was held recently in Dawson Creek.
Okay. Moving on, minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council June the 10th? Councillor Mountinson, seconded. Councillor Wilber. All those in favor? Carried. Correspondence, letter from Dallas Schwert, Black Gold Events, May the 30th, 2013, Re National Reining Horse Association Show, July the 19th to 29th, 2013, Request for Temporary Stalling. Just before we deal with this correspondence, isn't there some updates to that, Jim? Re logistics and locations?
Yes, through your worship. To begin with, where the letter references the West End, they mean the East End? And we've confirmed with them that they mean the East End. We have checked for the other events, which are concert as well as the swim meet, and actually these can all be accommodated at the spots that they have suggested. So we believe you could approve this request.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So what's the council's disposition of this item of correspondence? Councillor Schuman?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we grant them the temporary stalling that they need for their event.
Okay, is there a seconded for that? Councillor Wilber, any discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Next item, letter from Darwin Wren, Mayor of Tumblr Ridge, Re the 12th Annual Drizfest Music Festival Parade Participation, orders the 3rd, 4th, 2013. Councillor McFadden?
For information, your worship?
Seconded councillor Schuman, discussion? All those in favor? Carried. So we'll move on to item 7.1. Report from the number 13-140, from the Director of Corporate Administration, Re Dawson Creek Annual Report for 2012. Yes, councillor Wilber?
I'll make the motion that report number 13-140 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding Dawson Creek's annual report for 2012 be received. Further, that the City of Dawson Creek's annual report for 2012 be made available to the public. Further, that July 15th, 2013, be declared the annual meeting, at which time council will receive final input from the public before approving the annual report.
And is there a seconded councillor McFadden? Discussion?
Councillor Kenny here?
Yes.
Again, I just want to compliment staff on what a great job they did on that report. Very impressive report, well detailed. I just wanted to comment that it was a great job.
All those in favor? Carried. Item? Is that sort of how you always start?
There'll be a fine, your worship.
Okay, was that really sort of ominous prelude to this item? Report number 13-143 from the Chief Financial Officer, Re Request to Borrow Funds Through Security Issuing. Councillor Mountinson?
Move that report number 13-143 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the request to borrow funds through security issuing be received, and further that council approve borrowing from the Municipal Finance Authority of BC as part of the 2013 Fall Borrowing Session, $535,496, as authorized through loan authorization Truck Filling Station Bylaw, number 41212011, and that the Peace River Regional District be requested to consent to our borrowing over a 10-year term and include the borrowing in their security issuing bylaw.
Seconded councillor Schuman, discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Item 7.3. Report number 13-142 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, Re Development Permit Application for WEL Oilfield Limited, 433 Rolla Road.
You want me to?
Do you guys sort out who's going to make the motion? Councillor Kenny is going to. You're going to read that in your loudest voice?
I'll move the recommendation, number 13-142, from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding development permit application for WEL Oilfield Limited for 433 Rolla Road, B and C. And further, that development number 13-16, for construction of the industrial shop at 433 Rolla Road, be authorized principal and issued upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period and receipt of the financial security.
Seconded, councillor Wilber, discussion? All those in favor? Item 7.4, report number 13-139 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, Re Development Variance Permit Application for Inland Motor Holdings, 2021 89th Avenue. Now here we, go ahead.
I'll make the motion that report number 13-139 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainability of Development, Re Development Variance Permit Number 13-02 for Inland Motor Holdings Limited, at 2021 89th Avenue be received. Further, that council approve issuance of Development Variance Permit Number 13-02, which reduces the principal building's minimum front setback from 5.5 metres to 1.9, and the rear setback from 7.5 metres to 2.5 metres.
Seconded councillor Wilber. Now, there's an item of correspondence received relative to this matter, and I would like to draw attention to that. A letter from Brad Ant, and I trust council members have read that, and this motion is being made after considering this item of correspondence. So any discussion? Councillor McFadden?
I think a question to staff, were we to approve this? We're not chitling in stone every, any future cases would all be dealt with on an individual basis, is that correct?
Through your worship, the development variance process requires a staff report on the specific circumstances of the application, so no two reports will be identical.
Thank you.
Councillor Mountinson, did you wish to say something?
Well, the, some of the concerns in the letter actually, the only word that I've got in my head is strung a better chord, strung a bit of a chord with me. It's the last point, you know, applying the same standard to all is certainly, certainly one that I, that resonates with me. So I believe that I'm going to be opposed to the variance of this law.
Okay, councillor Wilber?
Along the lines of what Mr. McFadden asked was kind of what I was thinking, but so far every variance permit that's come before us, we've looked at it for that particular variance, that particular piece of property. So I don't think we're limiting anything or setting a standard. As the proposals come forward, we'll look at them for their merits and their merits alone on each permit, so I will be voting in favor of this.
Councillor Schuman?
Yes, well, I was against this in the beginning, and for exactly the same reasons as Mr. Ant has really conveyed to us, so I'm voting against this.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor?
I'm in favor.
Thank you, Sue. I will vote in favor as well. Carried. Thank you, Sue. It's carried?
Me and Cheryl are opposed.
I voted in favor.
Yep, got that. Report 7.5, sorry, report number 13-144 from the Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Re Banking Services Renewal Request. Councillor Wilber?
I'll make the motion that report number 13-144 from the Deputy Chief Financial Officer regarding banking services contract renewal request be received. Further, that the appointment of auditors and bankers policy be waived, and further that council authorize staff to renew the banking services agreement with TD Canada Trust for a five-year term, effective October 1st, 2013 through to September 30th, 2018.
Seconded, councillor McFadden, discussion?
Oh, oh, hey, I got a conflict here. I'm out of here. That was a close one.
You're in jail.
You just realized that?
Yeah, well, I don't know. Sorry, guys. I'll be back.
Councillor Melk has got another job.
I know. I'm just saying, he's just realized that he works for a bank. Okay, that's duly noted, I take?
Duly noted.
Okay, we wouldn't want the poor guy to have a conflict with interest here. And so any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Carried. Perhaps we can retrieve councillor Mountinson?
What a guy.
Now we have report number 13-136 from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, Re the Award of Request for Quotations Number 2013-17 for Dual Engine Self-Propelled Snowblower. Councillor Schuman?
Sounds pretty fancy. I'd move the report number 13-136 from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the request for quotations number 2013-17 is received. Further, that staff be authorized to purchase the 2013 LaRue T85 Dual Engine Self-Propelled Snowblower from Falcon Equipment Limited for $478,892.92 excluding taxes.
Okay, is there a seconded for that? Councillor Wilber? Any discussion?
No, I was voting already, sorry.
Well, yeah. It's encouraging to find you so proactive this morning. Okay, this is within budget, so.
I do have a question.
Yes, you do.
Is this like the big one that they use downtown to?
Yes, it is. The current model is 35 years, it's the one that throws rocks through councillor Kenny's window. It's 35 years old, so it's time for it to go.
Okay. All those in favor? Carried. Next item. Report number 13-13 from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, Re Award of Tender Number 2013-15 for the Sewage Treatment Plan Outfall Replacement.
I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, do you want to read it aloud?
I'll move the recommendation that report number 13-134 from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding award of tender for the sewage treatment plant outfall replacement be received, and further that the tender for the sewage treatment plant outfall replacement be awarded to Fraser Ferrari Driving Limited in the amount of $172,830 excluding taxes.
Seconded, councillor McFadden, any discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Moving on, report number 13-137 from the Deputy Director of Community Services, Re the Mile Zero Roping Club.
Sorry, I'm just trying.
I can read it, I've got it right here.
I can read it, I got it right here too. I move the report number 13-137 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the Mile Zero Roping Club be received. Further, that council deny the Mile Zero Roping Club's request for a suitable place to post a vote.
Seconded, councillor Mountinson, discussion? Councillor Mountinson?
Just, well, I think I've got three questions written down here, Mr. Chair. There were a couple of things that I believe were identified in the initial letter that we received that, well, forgive me, they might be rectified in the report here, but I do not, there were questions that were still outstanding when I had finished reading the report. So what of the, what of the field near Lakota, the Lakota Centre, right to the, right to the east? Is that identified in the report here?
Yeah, through you, your worship, the club itself came to the conclusion that of the original three locations they had talked about, one, the only one was really feasible for them when you looked at everything, including water supply and access. So they coalesced their request into one location. That location did not receive consensus between the two leaseholders there, and so we're recommending denial.
Go ahead.
I suppose that answers the second question, but just the third question that I wanted to ask. In the, there's a couple of requests, I believe, that came out of the Exhibition Association's response to the request, and one question was that I haven't figured out yet, that I've been wondering actually for quite a while, is who actually does live in that trailer that was once for a caretaker near the Light Horse Rings there?
Through your worship, we haven't taken any action on any of the items contained in the letter from the Dawson Creek and District State, or Exhibition Association. We had only asked them for their opinion on housing the cows. What we have is a letter full of 40 issues that they would like addressed. I believe it's incumbent upon them to bring that to you in a separate forum. I don't think it's appropriate for you to respond in the context of housing a few stray cows.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking about that exactly, but they were just curiosities that piqued my interest as I read their letter. But yes, very good.
Okay, thank you, councillor Mountinson. Maybe those curiosities will be answered at a later meeting.
Yes, hopefully.
Any other comments? Councillor McFadden?
I'm looking at my map here, your worship, and I see a large square area that's been, it's red, I guess. Is that the area that we're talking about today?
I'm gonna have to get to that.
And I'm, I, I'm not sure what, I'm having, I'm having a tough time interpreting this map, I think is what I'm saying.
Okay, I can't find it. Can you find it for me?
Your staff is just searching for this map, so.
Yeah.
I'm trusting that the map you're looking at is...
Yes, the area in the red is the area proposed by the roping club and by DC Stables and Arena, but rejected by Dawson Creek and District Exhibition Association.
Do they give a reason for rejecting it? Do you know, Hoffen?
Well, if you read through that letter, there's 30 reasons.
Well, I read it twice, yeah, I read it a couple times, but it's just very confusing. I think I'm going to vote against this motion. I think it's, it may require some of our time or staff time to sit down with those folks, but surely to heavens we can accommodate all the interested parties.
On that topic, your worship?
Yeah.
If it's council's desire, that council get involved in settling disputes between the Dawson Creek and Stables Arena Association and the Dawson Creek and District Fall Fair Exhibition Association, we can do so. It's a huge issue, it should be a strategic priority because it will consume the time of staff for an entire year, and that consensus will be required before a new use can go down there because there is not one day in the year that the City of Dawson Creek has control of that land. It is under lease 365 days of the year, and those leases can't be changed unilaterally by the city. Staff has previously tasked, or council has previously tasked staff to such an effort, it's never come to fruition. We have never had an occasion where that consensus was achieved.
Thank you. Any other further comments? So we'll put this to the vote, all those in favor of the recommendation, carried. Report number, the last item we'll deal with before...
Terry was opposed.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
He stated that, so I assume you've got that. Thank you, Duncan. Report number 13-141 from the Deputy Director of Community Services, Re Summer Ice. And then after this item, we'll adjourn and further delegations. Yes, councillor Wilber?
I'll make the motion that report number 13-141 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding summer ice be received. Further, that council direct staff to make ice available at the Memorial Arena on August 19th, 2013, in order to accommodate summer ice requests.
Seconded councillor Schuman, discussion? All those in favor? Carried. So we'll take a couple of minute recess, get some coffee, and then we'll have Danny Shields behalf of Mile Zero Cruisers as our first delegation. The children are here, so we will begin with the item 6.1. So Kevin, would you like to handle this item of the agenda, bring them to the front here?
We have a couple of students here from Dawson Creek Secondary Central Campus. There were four students originally, but two of them are exams, so today we have Brayden and Dalton, and the two that couldn't make it were Caitlin and Matthew. So what we did is, part of Drinking Water Week, we came up with some ideas on how to reach out into the community and bring a little awareness to the water treatment plants and also maybe generate a little interest into the future about the careers in water treatment plants. So we reached out to the grade eight classes and teachers, and the teachers submitted some students' names forward who might be appropriate for this, and as the boys say, who've got their work done and were able to go. So, yeah, so I'm just gonna turn it over to these guys, but they did go for a tour of the plants, and I guess they're a water treatment plant operator for a day, so they can say a few words about their experience, so. Brayden, go ahead.
All right. We went to water treatment plant, as he just explained, and what we figured, we figured out that there are ways we get our water is much more complicated than it actually is, is that just turn on a tap and get fresh water. It goes through at least five different cycles, and like five different reservoirs too, so it's pretty complicated, but we're gonna try and talk about it in half an hour.
That's a lot of information to take in in half an hour.
I think the important thing here is that now these gentlemen will really go back to not only their peers, but their parents and explain that the complexity behind our water treatment plant, and it's not as easy as you turning on the tap, and hopefully generates some interest in pursuing a career in that. So is there any questions of council?
I've noticed the spelling of treatment.
Oh.
It's, I like creative spelling, but was it, was that intended? Was it a treat?
Yes, it was.
I gotta look at this guy.
I think it's a good idea. More people are aware of the complexities of our, of our water system, the better. Everything to do with water is complex, but water security is, it took the highlight to remember in Ontario when there was, so we're very lucky to have the staff we have out there, and we have, I think, one of the most complicated water treatment plants in BC, is that correct to say that, Jim?
Yes, it is one of the two most.
Yeah. Councillor Schuman?
So after your day out there, do you think that this might be something you might...
might think about for a future job?
Uh, me personally, not, but me was...
I, I found myself interested in the subject, and it might be a good idea. And if, um, science and such, and, well, yeah, it, it looks scientific, but I can do it.
Hmm. Well, thank you for taking part, and, uh, it's a good idea to do that, Kevin.
Yeah, we, uh, it was the first time that we've done it this year, and, uh, I think we'll be doing it moving forward every year as an opportunity.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So perhaps I'd like to invite Danny Shields, uh, behalf of the, the Mile Zero Cruisers to, uh, make a presentation.
Well, council, we just want to give you an update of, uh, what's gonna be happening in just a little less than two weeks, our nineteenth annual summer cruise. Uh, things are going very well. The idea for the weekend is sort of the tried and true that we've done for the last at least sixteen years. Friday night, people will be arriving from around Alberta, BC, barbecue down at the Co-op, and then we do a little cruise around town afterwards. Uh, Saturday, we again have a rally in town. Uh, we have a couple of new interesting stations. Uh, if you're lucky enough to take part, you might enjoy it. But I'm not gonna tell you what they are, other than we do have one where, once again, we will be having people driving their cruisers blindfolded.
Oh.
It's in a safe situation. But they will be driving in blindfolded. Some of these guys have hundred thousand dollar cars, so it, uh, makes for an interesting sweat degree as they're moving around. Uh, we have our banquet that night at the, uh, Curling Rink. And then Sunday, the big day, is the show and shine. Uh, this year, the local businesses have stepped up more than any year in the past. Uh, incredible support. We're just overwhelmed with the kind of support we've had from the businesses. And that's just allowed us to do far more advertising than we've ever had. We're gonna have a twenty-four page insert that will be coming out this next week. Uh, we're also distributing it around the north to try to, uh, attract more people to Dawson Creek and play up, play up the area. Uh, the show and shine, last year, we had three hundred and thirty vehicles on display. We are hoping, weather dependent, we will have the same kind of numbers or possibly more. We're planning for more in case. Uh, if you've read our request, we have asked for one more block downtown, so we've got overflow parking. We can take care of that. Uh, one of the tasks we do need this group of six people to do is, is a delegate to be there on Sunday to pick council's favorite. And we have an award ready for you to, uh, to give to your favorite, uh, ride that's there, uh, on the weekend. And, uh, just to entice you, we have a, a little bit of a, a gift for each of you to remind you of what's happening in two weeks. Uh, last year, the first year, we had a, a little stuffy with, uh, our T-shirt on it. And so we thought that was kinda cool. We would, uh, continue on. It's almost like a collector's item now. And so we wanna make sure each of the councillors got one before they were all snapped up by everybody else. Uh, next year is our twentieth annual. We've already started planning for it. Uh, we have a, a group of people that are looking at things we can do to make even a bigger bang for that one. And of course, we'll be looking for that as well. Any questions?
Councillor Schuman?
I don't have a question, but I'll tell you, I'm actually gonna be here this year, and I'm so excited.
Good.
Because, um, I've been missing out the last couple of years. And, uh, you know, I, I'm always excited about the, the show and, uh, seeing all those cars around town. You know, there's all sorts of people coming from all over the place. And it's a great thing that you guys do, and thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wilbur?
Actually, just wanna reiterate the thank you. The Mile Zero Cruisers put a lot of work into this, and it's becoming well-known throughout the province, um, what we do. And so thank you very much for the hard work from the club.
And Shaila will be the mayor then, so she can show up to pick the cars.
Oh, gladly. Can I sit in them all?
And, and there's a rumor that one councillor might have a vehicle in it this year.
Rumor?
There's a rumor.
Terry.
Nah, I don't think it was Terry. So, if Mr. Malkinson can get together with his father, uh, see his coordinates.
No pressure.
No pressure, though.
Yep.
It's public. I think it's gonna be in the paper, actually. The papers and daily.
Yeah.
Great anticipation to see what Mr. Malkinson's, uh...
They wanna do the build-up too.
Great, nothing else?
Okay, thank you very much. On behalf of council, to the Mile Zero Cruisers and yourself, Danny.
Good.
Good job always. Thank you very much. I'd like to invite Chris Burke to the podium there. Uh, we, uh, parking on a hundred and thirteenth Avenue. Welcome to the council meeting, Chris, and the floor's all yours.
This time while I'm here, I promise not to palm on your desk.
Oh, okay. That must have been, uh, before I was, uh...
He just gets excited.
That's okay.
I'm, um, I'm here on behalf of, uh, the residents of a hundred and thirteenth Avenue, your worship. Uh, this is a serious, uh, issue on our street. And, uh, I'm hoping that you all received a copy of our letter of concern. And on, on the, uh, other sheets, there are signatures on the sheets. There's only one signature missing. It was unfortunate. We were unable to, um, obtain a signature from a lady. She wasn't available. But, um, the, the residents of this street are all in, uh, one accord in concern to the matters that are going on. Uh, Dr. Voltry has put a lot of time and effort into the building, has improved it, parking lot. And, um, it's a big improvement o, over what it was before. And he's added a, added value to our neighborhood. So, we're, we're, uh, not knocking the doctor. The problem is this, it's the parking and the safety of the pedestrians. On a hundred and thirteenth Avenue during the wintertime, the pedestrians, we're talking students, staff, um, support for Northern Lights College, like their, their maintenance crews. We're talking joggers go into the college. Then we're talking the children to go to Tremblay School, the staff also. They have to share that street with the vehicles. And every year, somebody almost gets hit and struck. And this year in particular, a lady almost got crushed between the parked cars at the corner of a hundred and thirteenth Ave and thirteenth Street, and a vehicle coming off of thirteenth Street onto a hundred and thirteenth Ave. It was very fortunate that the, both of them realized there was no room for the vehicle and the pedestrian. And so, um, we've seen this a number of times. I believe, if I'm correct with the information I got from fellow residents, that, uh, it was asked of the city to put a sidewalk there. The sidewalks in that area were installed in nineteen sixty-eight by Calgary Concrete. For some reason, they should have joined the two schools. I'm sure Northern Lights College was there in nineteen sixty-eight, same as Tremblay School. Um, uh, there's plenty of room on the north side of the street, first sidewalk. Plenty of room, your worship. Um, also, um, having to share that street, you, you see those children struggling in the morning to avoid traffic. It's also dark on our street. We're gonna approach BC Hydro for a street lamp, okay? But it's an unsafe street. And in the wintertime, um, in concern to the parking, uh, we're asking, uh, we have some recommendations. And, uh, Dr. Voltry's office has a big backyard, and there's access from the alley all winter long because the, uh, garbage disposal comes in the back alley. Great. Um, this would take the traffic off our street. Um, Gladys, uh, she, uh, was your, um, bylaw enforcement officer, has ticketed people on our street. They park right on the corner where the, on the southeast corner, they even block the sidewalk. And then with the snowbanks on the corner, visibility is, uh, hard, uh, to visually see oncoming traffic. But at times on a hundred and thirteenth Avenue, you cannot pass a half-ton pickup between the parked cars because of the snowbanks. They're about four feet. You lose four feet each side. So, I took my tape measure out this morning. Uh, um, a hundred and thirteenth Ave is thirty feet wide. Thirteenth Street is forty-two feet wide. So, um, parking on thirteenth Street, um, city of Dawson Creek maintains from curb to curb on thirteenth Street. They do a beautiful job. You can see those curbs at any time in the winter. They do a fantastic job. Parking on thirteenth Street wouldn't interfere and cause havoc the way it does when you have to, uh, back a vehicle up because your mirrors are touching and back down, turn east towards the college to get off our street. There's, there's a serious problem. So, in our letter, um, we're asking the doctor to put a parking lot in the back. We all agree upon it. A simple parking lot. And I, uh, believe, uh, your worship, that members of council and the mayor at that time were misled and misinformed in concern to the parking of the doctor's office. If you see in my letter, there's four, uh, parking spots for staff, three for, um, patients. There's up to eight on our street. Does that sound like adequate parking to you? Also, um, um, a hundred and thirteenth Ave is a two-way street. When you have to back vehicles up down the street because you can't get out, that's blocking the traffic. That doesn't sound like two-way traffic on our street. So, um, um, on the part of the city, uh, to, um, paint the curbs in that area, the full sixty feet or whatever from the corner down to the next adjacent piece of property, is, uh, some yellow paint and some signs asking for no parking for Dr. Voltry's office. And if the doctor doesn't, like I mentioned, that if he, um, if he's, uh, reluctant in pla, uh, putting, um, a parking lot in the back, there's more than adequate parking on, on thirteenth Street, sir. So, that's what we're asking here.
Well, thank you, Chris, for your presentation. I, it's very clear and very, very well thought out. Uh, any comments, uh, from council members to, to Chris here? Councillor Wilbur?
I'm just wanting to have the residents on that street talk to Dr. Voltry's about parking in the back.
We, um, when Dr. Voltry's, uh, uh, was going to purchase the property, we, uh, uh, addressed the issue that there wouldn't be adequate parking. And, uh, the city of Dawson Creek was informed that there would be. So, this was a number of years ago. So, the first winter, we watched, and we barely got any snow two years ago. There was a big difference this year. So, we did have, uh, 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 dealings with Dr. Voltry in concern to that matter and, uh, 'cause he was about to purchase the property for a doctor's office. So, we, we addressed it to him already once before. But this has become serious. It is a serious issue on our street.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any comments with that? Well, thank you. We, we've got your letter. We've, uh, I think we've all understood your concerns and, uh, your suggestions. So, we will be considering this and, uh, and, uh, at a later time today.
Okay.
And, um, you'll be hearing then from, from staff.
Okay.
About council's decisions.
Yeah, thank you, your worship.
Thank you.
From members of council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Final delegation this morning is Remy Roulet from Cal Tire, re Boulevard Use. So, Remy?
Morning.
Remy, sorry.
Morning, everyone. Um, so I guess I'm here because we have a fence that intrudes onto the city's property. It's on the boulevard. My understanding, the fence has been there for as long as I have. I've been in town for seven years as the manager of this branch. Um, I didn't realize it was on city's property. We put up a new fence in the existing location, uh, last fall. And then this year, we've applied for a new, uh, building permit because we're gonna put up a warehouse in that compound. And I received a phone call from, uh, one of the engineers saying that, what are you doing with the fence? Has it gotta move back to six meters? Had I known that, I guess, before, I suppose I probably wouldn't have thought about putting a fence there in the first place. But because it was right where we had an existing fence on that property before, I didn't know the difference. So, I guess my, uh, my question is, can we have a variance so that, that fence can stay where it's at? We need the space and, uh, to continue doing business and to have the room. We are actually in the process of, once that is all finished, that project's done, we have a, another compound that is also over the line. It's been there before my time. So, that fence will actually come away and go, that whole compound will go away and increase our parking so that we're out parking on the roads. And I know that's been an issue in the past when we get really busy in that place. So, we're trying to increase our parking and have everything kinda put into one compound so it's a little cleaner here. But that, that fence needs to stay where it's at, as far as I can see. Does anybody have any questions?
Councillor McFadyen?
How far is the fence encroaching onto city property? Like you said, uh...
It's six meters.
Really? Oh. Now, looking at this map here, as I said earlier, I don't read maps well. Where exactly is it? I see a hundred and seventh here.
Yep. It's right along a hundred and seven.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Well, thank you. I, we will be considering this matter later, later today. Thank you for attendance. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Well, that concludes our delegations. So, if we can continue now, section seven, two more reports to consider. And, uh, the number, report number thirteen dash one four five from the Recreation Facilities Manager, re Award of Request for Quotations for the Ken Borick Aquatic Center Tile Repair and Replacement. You have a recommendation before you. Councillor Schuman?
I'd move that report number thirteen dash one four five from the Facilities Manager regarding the Ken Borick Aquatic Center Tile Repair and Replacement tender, twenty thirteen dash zero five, be received. And further, that council approve the Ken Borick Aquatic Center Maintenance Closure from August thirty-first to October twenty-seventh, twenty thirteen. Further, that the contract for phase two of the tile repair and replacement be awarded to Acapulco Pools in the amount of eighty-five thousand, fourteen dollars in taxes.
Seconda, councillor Wilbur, discussion? All those in favor of the recommendation carried? The next item is the report number thirteen dash one four six from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, re the Development Permit Application for N and T Properties, Cal Tire, eight hundred, one hundred and seventh Avenue. There's a recommendation. Councillor Wilbur?
I'll make the recommendation that report number thirteen dash one four six from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the Development Permit Application from N and T Properties Limited for eight hundred, one hundred and seventh Avenue be received. Further, that the Development Permit number thirteen dash seventeen for the construction of a new warehouse at eight hundred, one hundred and seventh Avenue be authorized in principle and issued upon successful completion of the required ten-day notification period and receipt of the final security. Financial security, sorry.
Seconda councillor McFadyen, any discussion?
Uh, through you, uh, your worship, the Development Permit Report, uh, indicates that, um, the development permit is conditional upon Cal Tire removing the infringing fence. So, if you're going to, um, uh, respond to, um, Cal Tire's request this morning, there would have to be, uh, specific wording to that effect in, um, this recommendation. Um, because otherwise, what would be going out for then, ten-day comment from the neighbors who are, as you know, are very interested in that area, would be that the fence was coming down?
Okay, thank you. Jim, councillor Wilbur, you have a...
Well, I just had a question on that. I mean, um, are we gonna have discussion on that fence?
Yes, let's discuss this, uh...
My question then is, how long has that fence actually been there? I mean, the whole, I, my understanding was the whole point of this process was they're improving their
I mean, the whole, my understanding was the whole point of this process was they're improving their property, um, having better storage. And so what maybe some of the neighbors consider not as sightly would, would be more sightly. So I'm just wondering, what really is the issue with the fence? How long's it been there?
Jim?
Uh, well, a couple of points on that, Your Worship. Firstly, it's city-owned property and the liabilities all flow to the city and, how long it's been there, I don't know, but this whole process has made the city aware that it's there and that it's on city property. So now you have a different responsibility than before. We were aware it was on city property. Secondly, when the neighbors came in to complain about the rezone, they brought a number of issues to the table. Council's response to them were, none of those are really relative to the rezoning. Uh, they're relative to enforcement of, uh, for instance, uh, items placed on the laneway, uh, infringing fences. Uh, council's response to the residents was, we're going to okay the rezoning, but we're going to require Cal Tire to remove stuff off our property, remove it out of lanes. You're going to have those same residents back if you're now not enforcing. The, I'd like the opportunity to write you a staff report on the implications of you giving one business the right to use your property for nothing versus, uh, those who are enforced against.
So do we need to amend this or put something specific to the fence in there?
If you have a, this process needs to be delayed for that report, in my opinion, if you are contemplating allowing the use of city property by a private enterprise.
Okay, well, if it's fighting interjet, then we, we've had a request from Remy on behalf of Cal Tire to allow the continuation of this existence of this fence. Uh, we have this development permit. And we have staff advising us that we should consider the implications of this. Uh, and they're requesting that they be given the opportunity of writing a report that would outline our implications. So I would think that a motion to refer this matter to a a future meeting would be in order. I'm looking to you, Jim, for your advice.
Be the next meeting, Your Worship.
Okay. July the fifteenth meeting. So that would seem to be the right thing to do from my lens, but, uh, Council Wilbur and then Council Mountinson?
Um, I'd be willing to make that motion, but I would just like to add in there, I'm curious, and I guess I direct this at staff. This almost sounds to me like some of those old walkways that we have that people have been using and then they take over the ownership of that property and they pay taxes on that property. So I'm also wondering within that report if we could not have that information. Is it not possible for Cal Tire to purchase that property from the city so that they don't have to move their fence and can continue on with their warehouse? But I, I am willing to make that motion, but I just like that information included in the report.
So, um, you're making a motion to refer this item seven eleven to the July the fifteenth meeting of council so that we can consider it in light of staff report about the implications? And the, you'd like in that report consideration of the opportunity to purchase?
Yes.
Okay, so that's your motion. Is that understood by everyone? We need a secondor. Council Mountinson, discussion? Council Mountinson?
This is, again, one of my many mere curiosities, this meeting. But, uh, I'm not sure if it's relative to the zoning in that area, but is there any requirement for Cal Tire to have a fence on that property?
Uh, through you, Your Worship, I'd have to look into that. I think there might be a requirement for screening, but I don't know if there's a requirement to actually have a fence.
Okay, well, that curiosity will be captured in Jim's word for council. Thank you.
I figured he might.
Thank you?
Yeah.
Okay, can we vote on this matter then? Matter to refer with all the comments and curiosities that have been voiced today. Is that fair enough? All those in favor? Carried. Well, thank you, Remy. Thank you, and we'll be in touch as this, this unfolds. Okay, July the fifteenth, though, you have a date. Thank you. Okay, I'd just like to, uh, draw a brief adjournment as we move forward to the bylaws.
Do you want to recess?
Yes.
Okay.
Recession for a few minutes. Item eight point one, report number thirteen dash one thirty-three from the Director of Corporate Administration, Re-Athletic Commission Bylaw. This is a sort of a housekeeping item. Council Schuman?
I'm going to do report number thirteen dash one thirty-three from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Athletic Commission Bylaw be received. And further, that the Athletic Commission repeal bylaw number four-one-eight-zero twenty thirteen given first for three readings. Further, that the Dawson Creek Athletic Commission be dissolved.
Secondor, Council McFadyen, discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Mayor's Business? I guess when council was giving reports, I should have made a comment about these things at that time, but, uh, the, I'd encourage people to go to the new, um, asset at Mile Zero Park, the Trappers Cabin, which people are very appreciative of the couple of hours you put in helping on that, Council Mountinson. And, uh, the Dawson Creek Trappers Association have put in all sorts of artifacts into that, uh, new asset, so, uh, that was opened at eleven o'clock on Saturday. And I just, I think it's a real asset, something we should be proud of. It's very interesting. It was donated by Doris Karts in memory of her husband and, um, the, it, it was done, done very well and the historical society paid for all the transportation of that and they're also very appreciative of city staff for all the assistance they get. That part looked pretty good in my eyes when I was walking around it on, on Saturday. The Aboriginal Day celebrations in Dawson Creek, I opened those and it was an honor to be there. And I think, uh, much of the effort is energies of people have gone into this power well, but, uh, that's going to happen, which is great. But they plan on having a more expansive Aboriginal Day celebrations next year, possibly at Mile Zero Park, so I would encourage them to do that. It's an important day. And of course, Council McFadyen, uh, talked about the COPA and it was good to be there, speak at that function as well on Saturday. A couple of items I have that all relate to discussions that have been ongoing within certain elements of the community. Relative to fiscal gap, relative to, um, numerve and so on. And so I've got two motions that relate to that because I just like to get this knowledge into my memory bank or into my understanding. So I'd like to, to propose each motion, one of the, of course separately, that council will receive a report on the history, rationale and the cost-benefit analysis for providing the mayor with a car. I've been asked that question many times, so now is the time, I think, to put it to rest. Council Mountinson, you seconded?
Yeah.
Discussion? Council Mountinson?
This is something that I've been thinking about for the last while lately. We've got, uh, currently, uh, nobody using the vehicle out there and, uh, I think for us to be responsible, we ought to at least look into what's going on with that. So, at least getting a little further insight into the background, I think, isn't, uh, isn't a bad thing.
Discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carried.
Could you, um, say the motion again? It was kind of gurgled and I'm just trying to...
Sure, I can. Can you hear me well now, Sue?
Yes.
Okay, maybe. It's my fault, not technology's. I'll reposition my microphone. The council receive report on the history, rationale and cost-benefit analysis for, for providing the mayor with a car. That's been duly moved and seconded.
And, uh, oh, do you want a cost analysis of, of the cost for the mayor to have a vehicle?
Cost-benefit analysis, yes.
Huh? I guess the board heard. I just believe the mayor needs a vehicle.
Well, we all do, don't we? Get around. Okay. So I'll put that to the vote now that Sue's heard the motion and has had a chance to comment. All those in favor? Carried. The second motion is the council receive report on the differential between the mayor's stipend relative to councillor's stipend over the past twenty years and a rationale for any changes in that ratio. Secondor? Council Wilbur? Discussion? Council McFadyen?
See, the rationale, are you talking about the rationale that got us to where we are today? Or perhaps the rationale for going forward?
Rational for any changes over that time period?
Okay, thank you.
Council, can you hear?
Yes, I can hear you.
When we went to, we didn't, we, we went to, um, when they're looking at, uh, at what the mayor's, the mayor was being paid, the councillors were being paid. And, uh, and staff had put forward a report on the rationale of, of, of the stipends at hand. And, uh, so, you know, I, I thought that was a reasonable research. And I, I don't understand why we would need to put staff through the motions of, uh, investigating the history of the mayor's stipend and councillor's stipend. I, I don't, I, I don't think I can support that. I think the work has already been done. And we are in line with the rest of the province. And so, um, I, I, I don't think I would want to put staff attached on that. And then there are other things that, uh, really before it that takes more time.
Just a, a comment, uh, in response to that, the studies, as I understand them, uh, have been comparison of, um, of councillors to councillor and mayor to mayor. But, uh, Jim, do you want to comment on that?
Uh, well firstly, I understand what you're asking for is historical research, so I'm not going to be creating anything for you. If there is, for instance, a business case in the past on a mayor's car, I'll get it for you. If there is reports on the uh, ratio between councillor and mayor, I'll get that for you. Otherwise, I'll just get you the reports that have been tabled in front of council in the balance.
Exactly. Thank, Council Schuman?
Can I ask, um, you, why you want this? Like, what, what's inspired you to request this?
Yes, discussions within the community and, um, I think, uh, I would like to have the facts before me. Uh, some people are, uh, making assertions that I would want to either refute or, or have council deal with. Council Mountinson?
Well, I did see the, uh, mayor's vehicle identified under mayor's business. I did not see the, uh, question of, uh, ratio between councillor pay and mayor's pay identified. And I haven't really thought too much about this and I would, uh, like more time to consider so. In the event that something goes different, I think I'll vote against.
Any more comments? Council Wilbur?
I don't think we're recreating anything here. As Jim has said, it's just a matter of pulling up historical records and bringing them forward. It's out of my understanding.
Uh, through your worship, I believe that's the intent of the motion. Just as an aside, I will say, it's not actually a productive use of it, council's time or staff's time to review past decisions by council and decide whether you think that councillor of the day did a good thing or a bad thing. If you have a will to change the availability of a car for the mayor or the mayor's salary, it's fully within your control. And I'm not sure that you're obligated to agree with a past council decision or to disagree with it. You're fully free to do what you wish.
Okay, put that to the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Sue is defeated then because it's, it needs a majority, right, Jim?
Correct, although I don't know that was on the salary, correct?
Yes, yeah. There were two separate motions, yeah. Moving on to diary items, Calvin Centre, Crook Centre for the Arts Update. Yes, sorry. Brenda?
Uh, there's two items to be discussed, um, six-two and six-three from the delegation.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So what is there to be discussed with the SITS two? I thought the extra block, is that the matter?
Through you, Your Worship, there is no positive direction, uh, to accommodate the requests. The requests are not different than previous years except for that extra block, which staff would see no issue with. However, as always, council can't commit. The Mile Zero Park Society, so council's liaison to the Mile Zero Park Society, which would be yourself.
Yes.
Uh, needs to confirm with them that the camping, uh, is again okay this year and that the staging from uh, the village, uh, is okay again this year. Uh, council can't make that commitment on behalf of the society. Uh, so, uh, those two items are, are a liaison issue and then the other items need a specific resolution from council to approve.
Okay, well, I'll deal with the liaison function. Um, so the other matters, uh, before council that require resolution, would you like to gain summarizing, please, Jim?
Uh, my understanding is we're, this is the, I'll bring it up again, but this is the normal closure plus, uh, the additional block, it's the provision of, uh, no parking and, uh, no parking signs and barricades. So it's a Friday evening road closure July ninth, five PM to nine PM on One Hundred and Third from Eighth to Ninth. Uh, road closure on Sunday, July fourteenth, seven AM to four-thirty PM for One Hundred and Second Avenue from Eighth to Twelfth, for Tenth Street from Alaska Avenue to One Hundred and Fourth and from One Hundred and Third Avenue from Ninth to Tenth Street. And we need a representative from, uh, council named to pick the council's choice of work.
Okay, so, Council Schuman?
So I would make the motion that we, um, grant, um, the Miles Zero Car Club.
All those list of things.
The, their extra blocks that they need and that we have Shaila show up, being that she's acting mayor, um, to pick the car.
And Council McFadyen is keen to second this motion, is that correct?
That's correct.
No pressure.
Discussion?
I'll help you.
All those in favor? Carried. Now, item six point three, there are three suggested remedies to the situation. Seems to me, as I reflect on this, Jim, this is all all stuff that may be handled under our Transportation Master Plan, uh, considerations?
Uh, through your worship, what you've been doing with these requests is forwarding them to that plan to see if they fit in a larger context. I would assume there may be those that don't that will come back to you, but for, uh, an initial step, I think it would be uh, probably correct to refer this to that plan in case there are, for instance, traffic counts on the Hundred Thirteenth and Thirteenth Street that would inform this decision.
Right.
So moved.
So, Council McFadyen is, is moving that these matters that have been brought to our attention we refer to the Transportation Master Plan and we'll get a response from that review to further move ahead with these things. Is that fair enough? Council, will, will be your second in this?
I'll second. I also have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm, I'm just wondering, Jim, it was mentioned that, um, there was, I guess, a part of the original development that there was, uh, relayed there'd be added... the original development that there was, uh, relayed there'd be adequate parking and I'm just wondering if that has stayed true or that has changed as the delegation has presented?
Jim?
Through your worship, um, I think nothing has changed. Uh, the adequate parking is defined by the zoning bylaw and the seven spaces meet that adequate parking. Uh, what the residents were worried about was that in addition to those seven spaces, street, uh, spots would be required and that seems to have turned out to be true as well.
I just wanted to clarify that they had stayed true. Nope.
Okay, any further discussions, councillor Malkinson?
Um, the, uh, concern that he identified about, uh, his street being, uh, only thirty feet wide is, I don't know, it's not exceptionally small or anything like that. Is that, uh, yeah, it's, fits regular regulations.
Yeah, through you, your worship, the one hundred and thirteenth avenue is very similar to all the other avenues in the area for width, for the lack of a sidewalk. It's the normal thing in that area. What's not normal there is that there's a doctor's, um, office at one end now and there is a great deal of through traffic to the college. One hundred and thirteenth avenue was not designed to be a main arterial with through flow to the college. I'm not sure whether the bus continues to go on one hundred and thirteenth avenue or not, but at one time, uh, there was transit through there as well, which again is not normal on a standard residential avenue. So, um, the uses are not actually compatible with the design.
Okay, that's fine. So are all those in favor of the motion? Thank you, carried. So that concludes, uh, the additions to the mayor's business. Brenda, thank you for keeping your eyes on me.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Um, you don't mind if I, uh, ask you for a update on a meeting that you had the privilege of attending while we were at the meeting with the A G L G?
Oh, the fracking?
Yeah, yeah.
Hydraulic fracturing? Yes, what would you like to?
I don't know, just.
Well, it, okay, the meeting, uh, was held at the Best Western. Uh, it was well attended, I thought, uh, lots of, uh, experts there and lots of, uh, people who have an interest in this topic, some, some ranchers, some landowners, some people who concerned around traffic issues. Uh, so there was a thirty minute presentation on the work of P S A, which remembers not the primary producers but the service producers, the so, service people associated with the oil gas industry and about their history, their work, their rationale. And, uh, we had a, a, then sort of two group sessions. The group was divided in half. One half dealt with, um, technical issues and concerns with hydraulic fracturing and the other dealt with community relationships and, and communication. And, uh, they were, the responses were charted and will then go into, into the midst for consideration. But I think as a, as a overall summary, um, the respondents felt that the principles that the primary producers have as it relates to those technical and communication, community issues, uh, need to become part of the requirement for all the service sector. Uh, that those, uh, those are good foundation principles and just some good work goes on with the primary producers, but there's real gaps with the services. It's a, it's a mixed bag. And for instance, just to use one small example to illustrate, um, many people talked about damage to their vehicles and, um, what they would call poor driving habits. The primary producers, uh, as Jim has shared with us, you know, they, on all their trucks, they have devices that are monitor, that monitor the speed and the driving habits such as acceleration and so on. Um, there's a requirement that when you come off a gravel road, you park and you do an inspection of your vehicle for rocks that trapped, you know, the Jewleys and, and other things before you go on and journey on the hardtop. Uh, those things are, I think, well handled by the primary producers, but it might be a mixed, a bag, um, there, so i- in the, in the service sector. And so the encouragement would be that there be, uh, employers in those smaller service sectors start to adopt in a unified way the, uh, the standards and practices of the primary producers. And I, uh, it was interesting listening to some of the ranchers and, uh, another example would be, um, all sorts of statements made about sound and the people can hearing the fracking, it's disturbing their sleep.
Yeah, yeah.
But one thing that did grab my attention, just a small piece, and it's not relative to our area here, I repeat that, it's not relative to our area here, but in another area, there has been found to be positive correlation between fracking and increased seismic activity in a region in the northeast here, but, uh, nowhere near here. So it's, I'm glad I attended. Kevin was there for the first part and, um, it was good. Yeah, thank you. I should have reported on that. Thank you, Duntren.
Curiosity.
No, that's good. It's good to be curious. Now, if I move to the diary, Calvin Crook Centre for the Arts Update.
I'll just ask Duncan to come forward.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
So an update on the Calvin Crook Centre, uh, a brief update. So C Norman Trenching is working on the excavation, is working on the perimeter drainage, is grouting the membrane, he's putting the weeping tile, uh, and filling with drain rock. Sorry. So C Norman, uh, Trenching is hoping to have nine feet, uh, completed and backfilled. The rain has not been beneficial to his project down there and it saturated the, uh, excavation, requiring him to pump it out on numerous occasions. Uh, but it has actually been beneficial in showing us some of the areas where the water is actually getting into that excavation. So, um, just a couple of interesting facts, I guess. So, uh, and starting with the southeast corner on tenth street, uh, we found that, uh, buried in our, in our slope, there is a sewer line that takes, a storm line, sorry, that takes all of the roof water and takes some of the, uh, water from the basement out of the building, sumps it out and it's, it's broken. It's a clay tile pipe and it was broken in the, uh, bank and we were getting water coming in there when it rained and upon some investigation found out that that clay pile type, or clay tile pipe has been broken for who knows how long. So essentially the water from the roof and the water from the basement is going out of the building into the dirt and coming back down and wherever else it's traveling. Uh, moving to the north side of the building, we found an old sewer line. Uh, it's been, it's been abandoned, but, uh, as you know, when you, when you put sewer line down, there's a trench and there's bedding sand in there and it doesn't really stop water from accumulating in that trench. So that trench has been funneling water from different areas. I can't, uh, I can't comment on how much water it's been funneling, but water, uh, was coming through that trench when it was raining and, and percolating into the excavation to the point where the bank sloughed a number of times, um, just because of the saturation. So another area, uh, also the northwest corner, um, there is a valve water line coming in and it was, uh, leaking a little bit, sweating inside some fill creep. So it was also difficult to determine that that was leaking, but as we've got into it, we found that out. So the good news is the southeast, uh, the southeast corner is repaired already and the trench will be compacted, um, to block that, that canal or that drainage from getting in on the north side and the northwest valve will be replaced, uh, as we work our way through. So by the end of this week and hopefully even today, uh, Chad will have backfilled up nine feet on the building. It's a sixteen foot excavation, but he'll be up nine feet, meaning everything below nine feet will be completed definitely on the east side, hopefully the north side as well. So some, some good news there, I guess, uh, some, some interesting news. Um, can't confirm if this is all the contributors to water in that area, but, uh, with the weeping tile and looking after these, we are, uh, we're mitigating, mitigating the risk as we move forward. Um, Maloney's, uh, we're expecting a price and a timeline this week from Maloney's. Uh, they've spent a significant amount of time going through the building, determining what's remaining to be completed, looking at our plans, figuring out some schedules, figure out some subtrades, getting different pricing so that we can get the best value. And, uh, last week we had our architect on site. They're working through some deficiencies in the building. Um, they were actually gone through with P B I to determine what deficiencies are remaining and values. So they were working on that last week as well. So that is the, the final step for P B I in that building. That's all I have to comment on. Are there any questions?
Questions, Duntren? Councillor Malkinson.
I suppose it's, uh, only when we receive, uh, further, uh, uh, correspondence with, uh, Maloney's that we'll have a better understanding of the, uh, expected time, well, completion, right?
Yeah, and I guess that, uh, is really important that they spent some, some significant time in the building because we need an accurate number and, uh, an accurate timeline as well. Um, the project is, uh, not completed yet and, and we would all hope that it would have been completed by this time, so we wanna, we wanna get as accurate a picture as possible.
Yep, yep. Gotcha.
So problems of aging infrastructure.
Pardon me, sorry?
I say what you've cited is the problems of some aging infrastructure in the, in the sewer stuff and the pipelines, uh?
Yeah, it, there's a number of factors. I mean, uh, the trench, the trench, I mean, those trenches can be anywhere, right? There are old abandoned sewer lines and it was taken away from the building and it was only uncovered when the water was coming through and the sloughing actually uncovered the pipes, so.
So I take it that, uh, when those things were done, uh, a, a map of where pipes have been laid is non-existent? Is that a wrong assumption to make?
I, you know, I haven't looked at the, I haven't been down in the engineering department and looked at that, but, uh, yeah, I wouldn't be able to comment, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Just one further question, again from people who taught to me, uh, they, they say that clay, clay pipes, there seems to be some chemistry that goes on between clay pipes and, uh, clay in the soil. Have you heard of that? Uh, you know, you talk about the damage to the clay pipe, uh, some, I've heard that there's something with the chemistry that, uh, affects clay pipes.
No, I, that's, that's the first time I've heard that.
Okay.
I mean, we've had geotechnical engineers in, looking at different areas. I know they don't, uh, use clay, clay.
Not anymore, no, no.
It's not the material of choice.
No.
Um, so I imagine there's a reason they kind of pulled away from that.
Yeah.
But, uh, I'm not sure, I haven't heard that.
Yeah, well, thank you. Your comment, response just triggered, you know, the, the conversation said that's why clay is no longer used, you know, that's. Good, well, there's, there's progress being made and let's, let's hope that all those , uh, water sources are diverted at least from the Calvin Crook Centre. Thank you very much. Consent calendar, Jim?
I don't think there's anything on the consent calendar, your worship.
Strategic priorities chart?
Uh, nothing new on the charts, your worship.
Question and answer period.
No one has signed up, your worship.
Okay. Media question period.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say, this is my last council meeting. I was meeting at the end of the week back to Edmonton, so I just wanted to say thank you for everything you guys have done while I've been here. It's been a great stay and keep in touch on Facebook. I guess.
Well, Kewie, you got that camera rolling?
No, should I?
Yes, we have a, well, I thought you might like it for posterity, so I'm right. Do you wanna come forward here? I think on behalf of all of council, we, we enjoyed your diligent presence amongst us and around town, you've different functions, you've been a joy to have interactions with. This is a small memento from city council and we wish you all the very, very best that you pursue your career.
Thank you very much. Excellent.
Speech, speech.
I don't really have speech.
You gave your speech in advance.
Yeah, exactly.
So which radio station is it, uh?
Um, it's Corus, so there's two. It's six thirty Chad and I knew it's eight eighty, so I'll be doing radio news for both, kind of flocking back and forth.
Great. Good. Yes, Jill, sorry?
Um, I just had a question regarding the bylaw. So this is the first time I've, I've heard of it, but I just want to know why council is wanting to dissolve the athletic commission. Is, are you replacing it with a?
It's been replaced by, but, Jim?
Through your worship, um, the situat, the reason for an athletic commission is, uh, many activities, um, such as mixed martial arts or even a boxing match are not lawful under the criminal code unless they are sanctioned by an athletic commission. Uh, there was no athletic commission in Dawson Creek, but we had, uh, demand for those events, so we created a athletic commission bylaw. Various other places did as well. The province has decided in order to make this, uh, level playing field throughout the province that they're creating their, creating their own athletic commission, uh, under legislation and it's replacing all of the individual commissions. Uh, so we're happy to have the province take that off our hands. There was quite a bit of expense to council for that, uh, athletic commission bylaw and it was always difficult to get volunteers for it. So, uh, we consider this a positive step forward that the province is taking that role. It's reverse download. Usually the province downloads on us, here they're taking something off our hands.
I'm sorry, I just have some more, are there more targeted towards, uh, the Terry and Duncan, so I'm just wondering if I could catch them sort of after everybody else from the committee?
Yes, I think we'll have time after the committee of the whole meeting and our next meeting, which begins at eleven, so I think you'll have ample time.
All right.
Jill?
Sorry, just had a follow-up. Uh, because it's a bylaw, will, um, there be time for public consultation or because the province is seeking it on, you're not seeking public comment?
Through you, your worship, there is no public comment period on a repeal of a bylaw. And, uh, in this case, because of the legislation, it would be irrelevant in any event. Wouldn't matter how much the citizens wish to have this, the legislation prohibits it.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Jill. Okay, our staff sergeant has been eagerly waiting to come in front of the podium there and, uh, give us a report. Welcome.
So I guess I'll just kind of go through this, uh, point by point. We, um, we started to pick up a little bit. We started to notice a little bit more, uh, call volume and, uh, more of those summer type calls, the, um, crashes and, uh, noise complaints and, uh, alcohol complaints and that type of thing, but those are kind of expected and they're not out of the, um, out of the realm for, uh, other comparable, communities comparable season, so it's just part of an expected, uh, seasonal policing thing, uh, just comes with the nicer weather. And, um, the only, uh, the, the only takeaway from that really is that that can lead to, um, more impaired driving and of course we've got more enforcement in regards to impaired driving, so we're really hoping that, uh, people will just take the high road and, uh, and, uh, avoid giving into the temptation to do that. We have seen a little bit of a uptick in our, uh, impaired driving, um, stats and we're really, we'd prefer to have people driving safely rather than walking for a year, so that's, um, and, um, there have been lots of complaints, particularly in the rural area of unlicensed, uh, dirt bikes and quads and side by sides and that type of thing being operated, uh, on the, uh, on roads, uh, which they're not insured to do and there's some safety issues with that. And of course it also kind of ties back into the previous thing that I was talking about in that those incidents are very frequently tied to alcohol use and stuff like that. So typically, seldom would a season go by without us having some sort of a serious, uh, incident involving an ATV or a dirt bike and a no helmet and alcohol and no insurance and so on. So far, we've been really fortunate at avoiding that and, uh, it's kind of been more a case of luck, I think, than anything else, but we'd really like to kind of make sure that we put that message out there that, uh, that people should really, uh, use them in the manner in which they're intended to be used because they're not safe on, on the road. So that's, uh, that's, uh, one thing. We, uh, this is sort of a late breaking thing, but we did, we did just, um, have the ability here just today to put out a, um, a release on our undercover operation. We conducted an undercover operation here a little while ago and, um, it was aimed at the cocaine trade primarily in town and we were able to, uh, make seven arrests and lay nineteen charges in relation to, uh, trafficking. The, a little while ago, when I talked about the robberies, I had mentioned that we had, uh, we had used, uh, some advanced technique. The, uh, a little while ago, when I talked about the robberies, I had mentioned that we had, uh, we had used, uh, some advanced techniques in resolving the robberies. And that was one of the, uh, things that we did is we actually employed, uh, the, we had an existing undercover operation in place in town, and we redeployed that, uh, at the point at which we had somebody as a suspect in the, uh, in one of the robberies, and we were able to secure, uh, some evidence using undercover operations that's resulted in that person being out of the community. So that was kind of a cool thing to do, I thought. And, um, we are having a bit of a problem right now with, uh, break-in enters. And, um, there've been a number of them. Uh, we're actively investigating them. We're actively seeking any information in relation to, who may be responsible. We're looking for tips and we're looking for pointers. It only takes a small group of offenders to create a bit of a crime wave, uh, for break-in enters. If you have somebody that's doing two or three break-in enters a day in a community this size, you really notice it, and, uh, we're, it's inevitable that we'll end up making an arrest and that, that, that will stop. The sooner it stops, the better. And so we really like to say, if anybody sees anything suspicious, uh, we would definitely appreciate a call, uh, and, uh, a lot of these are occurring during the day, and so we're looking for, uh, um, obviously at night suspicious activity, we're always welcome a call, but I think most people make the assumption that those types of things are happening at night. And so if they see something happening that doesn't look quite right during the day, I think a lot of times we don't get a call. We'd sure appreciate one. So that's, um, that's where that is. And, um, yeah, with, you know, with, uh, with that said, we've had a couple of serious events. Uh, we had, um, uh, a, a few incidents that, uh, but they were resolved quickly with arrests and they're, and, and those are the types of things that really, uh, create concern, and those things have been resolved really quickly. There are, uh, we put out a, a press release about an attack that had occurred, uh, but we had a male in custody in relation to that incident within about five hours of the report, uh, and, uh, uh, it was, uh, some particularly impressive police work on the part of the serious crime section and general duty. They all worked together and they were able to resolve that. Uh, the male's not from this community, and, uh, so those always take a little bit of extra work in terms of, uh, and a little bit of extra luck in terms of identifying offenders and stuff like that, but the person's in custody, so that, that issue's resolved. And I have a new format for the stats, which I think is probably gonna be a little more helpful, um, in terms of showing month-to-month increases and decreases, um. One of the people that we recently hired took it upon themselves to kind of revamp the way that we were collecting and distributing the stats, and I think it's an improvement, but let me know what you think. This kind of lays it out in terms of, uh, in terms of where we're at, so.
Um, so the teenagers, are these hap- are people, you know, accidentally leaving their homes unlocked? Or, you know, are they, are they actually breaking windows, breaking down doors, or?
Yeah, so they're mostly forced entry. Um, of course, if, uh, if the door's open, we have had those as well, like where it's just been unsecured, but they are forced entry, break-in enters, so, um, so it's, uh, um, you know, with broken windows, that we, we're seeing a lot of broken windows. So it's, it's kind of difficult to fortify your residents against something like that, which is one of the reasons why we're really trying hard to, um, identify, uh, you know, the, the people that are responsible, but, um, um, one of the things that has been targeted is jewelry and, in the thefts that have occurred. And, um, you know, that's something that might be worth, uh, it might be worth securing that more, more carefully, because they're looking for items that are small and portable and valuable and, um, and, and, you know, and quick to liquidate, and, and so that's, um, that's something that I, you know, I'd recommend people think about how they're gonna secure that. It, it's almost certainly tied to the drug trade as, as well, and, you know, in that, um, typically when people resort to committing those kind of offenses, they're doing that, um, usually at the level of desperation to support an addiction, so, um, that is one of the angles in which we're focusing the investigation is in terms of identifying people that are selling jewelry, um, and, and that type of thing. So, um, we're, we're working at, on it from that angle, but, uh, if, uh, you know, if anybody becomes aware of somebody that's selling a lot of jewelry, we'd really be interested in that, for sure.
Um, so they may as well just never mind breaking into my house if I have jewelry. Jewelry I have is on my finger.
On your finger, yeah.
All I have, so big note. Um, with regard to the, uh, the perp that was, uh, the victim, the major assault there.
Yeah.
So my little daughter came home yesterday. She's all worried. Apparently he's out and running about, she thinks. Is that correct?
Not in town, not in, not in our town. Um, he is on some, he's in custody for a week. He's in, on some fairly strict bail, uh, conditions, and, um, I'm not really able to publicly comment, but I might be able to give you some, something additional that'll make you, um, uh, we're, we're, uh, in the process of, well, I mean, I might as well say, we're in the process of, uh, of, of, of looking at a rearrest on, on some additional things, uh, in order to, to try and deal with that issue, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I assure her that I'm sure he had all sorts of conditions upon his release and that I'm sure she's safe, but, um, you know, the, the kids are talking about it, the young girls are talking about it, which I think is good. I mean, I think it's good that they're talking about that this thick kind of thing can happen and
Yeah.
and, uh, it certainly has brought up some interesting conversations at my house about what we need to, to do to, to stay safe.
Yeah, um, being, you know, being together, being in a group makes it very unlikely that anything like that'll ever happen. Um, it, it, you know, it, um, a lot of times we see people that are, um, either quite intoxicated or, or alone or both, being the victims of these types of events. And so i- if somebody goes out with the intention of having a good time, it's, that's fine. It's just important to stay with a group and, and that, and that'll minimize. Yeah, and, and, uh, that support network makes it very difficult for anybody to become a victim of, uh, and then just the sort of usual due diligence that you always exercise with strangers, you know, and, um, I think the fact that this person was transient through our community is, is a little bit, uh, a little bit comforting in that, uh, you know, we're, there, there, there really aren't very many people like that. So, and that person isn't in this community anymore, so.
Any questions of Milo? If not, I'm gonna do the unusual thing of giving you a tip.
Oh, all right, well, we'll take one.
As well, going to hear.
A tip?
Yep.
Don't eat yellow snow?
That's exactly what it says, yeah.
Thank you, Milo.
Thank you very much.
Oh, a tip as in a?
A crime.
I was gonna tell him we don't pay for duties. I was gonna tell him we don't offer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work, Milo. Well, I must admit, uh, when Janet's microphone was tapped there and you talked about fine, Jim, does the fine, what, where do these fines that are collected go to?
Well, they of course go to staff events. I'm sorry to say, the council's never invited, so.
Shorty, you're, welcome to the meeting, Shorty, and?
You're keeping us awake.
Good morning. Everybody enjoyed the nice hot weekend?
Yes.
Wasn't a very busy weekend for us, so that's a good thing. Uh, you have the report in front of you. There's nothing, uh, unusual, I guess, about the numbers. They're fairly close to the average, so. Questions, concerns, comments?
How's your truck coming?
Yeah, the truck is not even in, in Canada yet. It takes approximately three months to, uh, get it built in the States, then it's sent to Canada, and then after that, it's a six-month process to build the rest of it, so.
Councilor Fadyan, you had a question?
Oh, I, I see nine grass fires. Is that just for the month or is that year to date?
That's, uh, for the month. Year to date, grass fires are not, yeah, yeah, you're right, sorry, it is, it is nine.
Yeah.
Which is lower than our, our five-year average of fourteen, so.
I thought it was a lot, that's why I was asking. That's all?
No, well, it's just a comment. It was great to see one of your, your staff, uh, working, I guess, three days, volunteering at the Copa event, so that's good to see the participation in volunteer work by the family.
I believe he's also a pilot, too.
Is he really? I didn't know that. He was parking, he was parking planes, uh, for three days.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, he just recently, uh, acquired his pilot's license.
Good for him. I'll have to, have to talk to him. I've known him since he was a little, little child. Didn't know that about him. Great. Well, thank you.
Who are we talking about? Now we're all curious. Tell us who you're talking about.
Sutton, Mark Sutton.
I'm Mark Sutton.
Okay, thank you, Shorty. That was short and sweet. No pun intended there. Okay, uh, report from the Director of Corporate Administration.
Good morning. Um, in my report, I've got the annual report.
Just a, just a question here. Can you hear Brenda Sue?
Sue, are you still there?
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
All right. Just wanted to highlight that the annual report is now out for public review. I will put it on our webpage and we have ads in the paper, and we'll bring that back to the next meeting for final adoption. Um, also, our community, another newsletter's gonna be coming out this week, and everyone's mailbox is just talking about capital projects and details on the upcoming election, and a reminder of stage one conservation measures in place, that kind of thing. Personnel, uh, last report, we had, uh, reported that we had hired Lindsay Borack as our casual, and this meeting we get to report that we've lost, uh, Executive Assistant Cindy Fisher. She's moving on with MLA by bringing. So we've, um, got quite a few, um, good applicants in for that position, so we'll hopefully be able to fill Cindy's big shoes. And, uh, last thing I want to mention is just if any, any one of, uh, council would like to run for the position of mayor, uh, resignation needs to be received by July eleventh. After that time, I'll start posting for nomination. Any other questions?
Just a question, I guess it's not something that you can answer, but to, to, to Jim, you know, you talked about joining on to stage one. Have, has there been any, um, any inquiries from any source around the proposed bylaw changes, uh, that were, as relates to water conservation, you know, new stage two, three, four?
Uh, through you, your worship, we've had a couple of calls, which are logged, and that's the totality of the response so far.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, did you have something, Councilor Maltinson?
I had one. Um, it's about, uh, I believe I, the fifth item that you've got identified that you're working on there. Policy manual retrofit, uh, to include, uh, history of, uh, each policy along with, uh, each policy in the book. I'm just wondering, and forgive me for not knowing, but I'm just wondering where that originated from.
Um, it did originate when we did our policy review. We thought that was a good time to make sure that we had, uh, background down on each policy.
Yeah, 'cause that's-
So then we can look back and see, it's good to know when policies are changed in case something comes up in, in a point in time. You need to know what policy was in place to make sure that.
Well, it was a frequent topic of discussion during the, uh, policy reviews that we did, you know, we always wanted a, almost perpetually wanted a background on every policy that we were considering, so I suppose having that isn't the, uh, worst thing for council to understand. Yep. Neat.
Okay, thank you, uh, very much, Brenda. Report from the Chief Financial Officer's delegate, designate, rather.
Thank you. Okay, so the month of May, we got, um, an increase slightly in our Calvin Crook, uh, increasing three hundred and twenty-five thousand from our report in April. Um, the property tax collection to June fifteenth, uh, that was for the purposes of getting the cow into administration, but we have a report from Friday and we're sitting just, uh, at about fifty percent, which is normal to where we would normally be at this time of year for our collection of property taxes. Um, the request for information, uh, that Acting Mayor Parslow requested, how much profit do we make off industrial water use? Um, Shelley was, uh, at this meeting, so, you know, based on the figures that were provided there, uh, if industrial use slowed down or stopped, the water utility revenues would be about one-third lower than, uh, they're presently affecting the annual surp- surplus, sorry, um, removal of industrial use revenue, and the fund will be about, uh, a breakeven. Um, and the current revenue stream, uh, has allowed the city to put funds aside for future capital support operational expenses, as well as to reduce the pressure on increasing the residential water rates. And it should be pointed out that industrial use also has an effect of sewer revenues because the variable sewer charges are tied to water charges at about sixty percent. So as consumers use water, your sewer is always sixty percent of that. Onto special events and activities, uh, Shelley attended the hundred and seventh Annual Government, pardon me, Finance Officers Association Conference in San Francisco, June first to fifth. She comes back with a, a lot of interesting, um, ideas that have percolated out of that. Uh, and then on to strategic priorities. We're working away on the majority of them still. Some have been completed, and that's about it.
Hey, thank you. So, uh, any questions? None. The reduction of, uh, as I understood it, Janet, the removal of, shall we say, that industrial revenue, you said would reduce the overall revenue by one-third, and that things would then be pretty well at even. Do you have an idea, just, uh, or perhaps you can find out for me, what is that tra- that one-third, what is that in dollars? Is it a million? Is it a million and a quarter, or?
I'm sorry, Shelley prepared to report?
Yes, let's understand that, Janet.
The, uh, if you look at the report, uh, your worship, the revenue from industrial, industrial water use was, uh, just a hair over two million dollars in two thousand and twelve.
No, and, but there's an expense to that as well, though, isn't there, Jim?
There is an expense, but the, um, because of the surcharge, the industrial revenue is about two million dollars, which represents about a third of the revenue. But the usage in two thousand and twelve was nineteen percent of the usage, so, um, notionally nineteen percent of the expenses generates, uh, a third of the revenue.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you. Yes, uh, Councilor Maltinson?
Two million dollars last year from sale of, uh, non-podable use of potable water. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what Jim said, yeah.
I asked that. I, I apologize here, but that's just a difference from my understanding. I've got, uh, email from a few months ago that assured me that it was one point two nine seven, but it's all the same. Well, it's not all the same, but I just, I, I just have a complete different understanding, that's all.
Well, Jim is talking about revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that is profit.
This is revenue.
I don't know, I'm, I recall the email, but, uh, these are the figures that Shelley put together in response to the request.
Yeah.
So I'll go with them.
Yes, absolutely. You betcha. Well, thank you very, very much. And Kevin Standing, looking forward to making a short presentation. Welcome, Kevin.
Good morning, everyone. I'll start with, um, building permits, 'cause it's always such a great news story. Um, we're almost twice where we were this time last year, so we're up, uh, twenty-four million dollars worth of, uh, building permit values, so that's continuing to be a good news story. Lots, lots of developments, and with what we see on the horizon coming forward, that's, uh, it's gonna be a really good year. Lots more, uh, subdivisions that are just underway, and then fully intend on, uh, more building permits being pulled later in the year, so those numbers will continue to grow. Um, just touch on bylaw quickly. Um, it is that time of year bylaws been quite busy with, uh, tall grass weeds complaints. It's that time of year for unsightly complaints that we get, so we're, we're keeping, uh, keeping pretty active on that front. Um, over to public works and engineering. One thing I wanted to touch on is, uh, you'll see at the beginning of the report is we have the paving tender now out, uh, for this year's, uh, capital works program. Uh, originally, we talked to council about developing a five-year- Originally, we talked to council about developing a five-year procurement. We did a lot of research on that, we tried to put something together, we also talked with legal review. It just did not look like it was gonna benefit the city in any way to go to a long-term over a short-term, one-year contract. None of the suppliers were gonna be willing to guarantee any pricing beyond one year. Really, all we were gonna get is a one-year tender with an opportunity to negotiate the remaining four years. So there's really no, no advantage to us in doing that. So that's why we've gone with just a one-year contract, so we've got that out right now. Other things to touch on is just in the water environmental end, you'll notice that we've made some process changes and I just highlight, you know, what the children said earlier today, the complexity of our system. And we're continuing to adjust and improve as we go and, I guess, just bring the awareness to what we take as a source and what we turn it into a high-quality product when we're done. So John's doing some great work out there, just optimizing the system, he's always looking for those opportunities, so it's great to see. We will be having a open house on Wednesday, the 26th. This is a follow-up to the permit amendment that we're looking to make for the reclaimed water plant, looking to expand the usage on that. So as part of that process, we need to have a public open house, so we'll be doing that at seven o'clock at the Best Western. That's just an opportunity for the public to come forward with any questions, concerns around that and we'll be happy to answer that, so. And just on the strategic priorities, water security, public meetings, we are now following up. You probably saw last week, we did do a press release on just kind of a wrap-up on the results of the surveys and everything. We're gonna do a newsletter that we will have hopefully out by the 15th of July. Just a two-page, again, just a wrap-up that we can distribute to people. And kind of talk about the process going forward and also the proposed changes in the water conservation bylaw. So, transportation plan, council was involved obviously with some, some sessions that we had. And subdivision bylaw review, I just got that document back from our legal review, so we'll, should have that on the 15th, July 15th meeting. So, any questions?
Kevin, I've had a couple of questions about the removal of the trees up in the subdivision at the end of Eighth Street and, and.
Along the Imperial Access?
Yeah, the removal of those trees and just what the requirements are for subdivision, sort of guys developing subdivisions to include trees into the subdivision, or is that just?
So, the trees along Imperial Access were actually removed by the gas company or the contractors for the gas company because they are doing a gas extension across the top of that quarter section, all the way west of town and over to the Hart Industrial Park for those. So that was not part of the subdivision, actually, those tree removals. But as far as the subdivision, yes, we do have a process to try and retain as many trees as possible. And also, the new bylaw will include some opportunities for tree plantings. And specifically, the Sunset Ridge, the development permits that have gone through earlier in the year, specifically talked about some tree plantings and, you know, some landscaping requirements, so.
Any further questions of Kevin? I have a few comments. If you like to reference your, the data about business licenses. You know, if I, and this, I guess, is really for maybe all of us, it's not a, there's no difficult questions, this is just good information. But it just struck me as you were reviewing things, if we take 2006 as a base year, we had 1,001 total business licenses issued. If I take your 2012 figure of 1245 and I add to that the 81 already issued, new business licenses issued this year, that translates to my mathematics, about a third, one-third increase in the number of businesses licenses over a, what is that, a seven-year period so far? I mean, that's, that's tremendous growth, if you follow my math, you know? I had the 244 difference between 2012 and 2006 and I added that the 81 for this year. I get 320-something, right? That's an incredible rate of growth that's going on, and it just illustrates it, sorry.
And if one of them was a shoe store, that'd be even better.
A shoe store?
I just wanted.
There is an expanded shoe store at the Quap now, but not what you're looking for maybe. Jim?
Through you, your worship, the figure for 2013 will not necessarily reflect all of those 81. Harsh reality of the business world is about fifty percent of business startups fail.
Okay.
So, our numbers are ascending slower than our licenses issued, if you know what I mean, because for the 81 new issued, we'll be aware that there's a balancing number that have closed. We just don't know what that number is until the following year, when we issue the invoices.
Well, even if half of them, it's still going to be in thirty percent increase, which is good. But a question, you separate, in that 81 figure, do you include, Kevin, the seven as, that are oilfield-related?
Yes, that would be, it was just something that council had asked a number of years ago to separate out.
Yeah, that's, no, that's good, I just wanted to double check that. I guess this is just an opportunity to make a statement or two here. I mean, I don't know about my fellow council members, but I've had lots of discussions with people, by lots. It's in the two-digit number, right, it's not in the hundreds, and it's the low two digits, but even that is a large number. The firm that was contracted for that shore water, the survey, I think the point needs to be stressed that that was done to the highest standards of, to obtain reliability and validity. And that is why they were searching for certain domains of our population, i.e. male under the age of what have you. So we'd have a balance, it wasn't intended to deny anyone the opportunity of submitting a response. And the questions were carefully worded to be, be objective. And that data we got as a city for consideration meets the highest standards within the polling industry that prevail. That's, that's what I've been telling people, because some people think that, you know, whilst it's only a sample of a thousand, it's a very, it's a good number for reliability. Jim, do you, do you want to add or contradict in some way?
No, that's correct, your worship, there's a couple of things. The, interesting to us is that the scientifically accurate home poll produced pretty much the same results as the online and the physical surveys, neither of which were vetted in the way you're talking about. They were not weighted to reflect demographics, they were, in fact, online, you couldn't just go on and fill out as many as you wished, but physically you could. So, the, the results were concurrent throughout.
Okay.
All three processes produced basically the same statistical profile.
Yeah.
Which is very good, but the caution is, of course, that this is a snapshot in time. And so it reflects how people were feeling at the time they were asked the questions. And not necessarily that they will be feeling the same if the matter comes to a referendum, and there should. Certainly, the experience in Alberta and then in DC in provincial elections should tell us that the way people are feeling one day can be a different thing another day.
That's a beautiful segue to my next statement. I've heard nothing and keep, people still keep talking about what they thought was an excellent sessions at the Incani event that you were a large part of, Kevin. And the, some people recognize that there's going to be the need for more consultation and the support of some statements that were made at the last council meeting. Since the last council meeting, I've had conversations with people and as you start to, as we begin to explore alternatives and information, you can sure see that people are becoming aware of the incredible financial burden. And one of the things I've been saying, and I would like Jim to comment on this again, is that so, so many people start with the premise that if we have, let's say, a $60 million project, one-third of the money's gonna come from the feds, one-third of the money's gonna come from the province and one-third from the city. I have been stating that is history. And the Fed's approach to infrastructure, Jim, is going to be per capita, which has.
Through you, your worship, those of you who were at FCM certainly attended sessions that were speaking to the future aspirations of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and the future intentions of the federal and provincial governments. And they, all three bodies seem to have a will to move to trading off reliability and certainty around federal and provincial granting for what the old system, which used to be that some combination of merit and political influence could bring you significant funding for an individual project. And I believe we would fare very well if that system continued. Certainly, MP Zimmer has indicated his support. If we were attempting to secure merit-based funding on a water line, certainly, I believe, new MLA Bernie would support that. But it appears as though neither will have the choice into the future. It appears we're moving towards a per capita model, which is a very comforting thing if you live in Surrey and a very challenging thing if you live in Dawson Creek. Per capita funding will have the effect of reducing the amount of funding available to communities of our size while increasing the amount of funding available to the larger centers. Now, we see that as challenging, but if you're living in Calgary right now and looking at what you're going to be facing for infrastructure charges and you have, you know, a population of several million, you, you see it as fair that the money goes where the population is.
And that per capita, your calculations would be about 700,000?
Well, that number rolls everything into one pie, that's gas tax, that's GST rebate and that's infrastructure funding. But the total number hasn't been decided yet, so based on FCM's figures, that's what we would get. But FCM is trying to raise those figures up and there's some effort by the province and the feds to lower that number down. So it's hard to know how this is all gonna work out, but I think the, it appears as though the days of applying for a project and seeking one-third, one-third, one-third are coming to an end.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's important for some community members who are saying it's easy to get, to know that there's a new reality there. Okay, well, Downton, you have your hand up.
I just had one question, one more question written down here for Kevin, I believe. And it's a, it's a general question, we might have discussed it maybe last year or before, but what sort of exists to, well, what does exist to provide the timeframe on paving that we see right now? You know, you see a lot of work done in the fall, is it mainly budgetary and budgetary considerations that need to be made before annual paving work is receded and begun?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, is it's the budget process that kind of sets the table for when work will begin. Budget, and Brenda could probably speak to this a little better, but budget's approved, May 14, May 15, whatever date that was. And then we go through the borrowings, the public approvals. We're concurrently doing the tendering, so we'll have that in place, so when we get the final approvals assumably, then we'll be ready to go. I believe that all those approvals in place, end of July.
July 30th.
So really, August 1st is the earliest that we can commence.
Mm-hmm, well, I know it's a, I know it's a regular annual thing, it's just how I think municipalities do their business, but it's just a, yeah, just a curiosity.
Yeah.
I should actually say on that point, so, your worship, one of the reasons why we went to an extended tender period for paving the last time around was the hope that that could change because it eliminates the last step, which is the tendering. But the truth of the matter is, our work is not large enough to gain priority for the paving companies. The, the work available to them through the Minister, Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure is always priority one because it's the biggest amount, so chances are that we would, we would fall to the, to the fall in any event, whether you changed your budget or carry approvals or whether you changed your tender. But before Kevin leaves, I just have to say once again, have you looked at the building permits? What you have here in one month is two very large current taxpayers, retail operations, Canadian Tire and Canada Safeway, both looking at expansions in the $4 million range and a new company, the Town Edge Controls, looking at a $2 million investment. The investment climate here is vibrant, and those who say otherwise really should read this report.
Thank you, Kevin and Jim. Moving, we have a, either a Barry Reynard who's gone on a crit diet or somebody who's.
Whoa, is that a sign? Whoa, looks like he, looks like he had some.
That's not Barry Reynard, that's Downton Redford. Welcome, Downton, alias.
I got that recorded. So, we'll start with the park planning that we held at Crescent View Park here on June 16th. It was well-attended, we had a number of councillors also participate. Received some excellent feedback, very positive, and in general, people just, it was great to see everybody come out. We targeted a number of the residents and we had very good showing. The farthest that we were aware of came from around 89th Street, I believe, so it was a very close-knit group. We found a lot of interesting things out about the neighborhood, we got some interesting information around some concerns they have as well as some of the, some of the things that they're quite happy with, in particular, the park and how it's coming along and the grass, maintaining, mitigating that dust and just getting some grass there so people can use that area. Talked about some of the uses, haven't had, haven't had a chance to go through the details of the survey that we provided at the barbecue, haven't had an opportunity to go through those results yet, but looking forward to getting through that information and getting into some conceptuals and getting into some feedback, some more, some more discussion. But overall, positive event and well-attended. We're approximating somewhere between 100 and 150 people, if you're gonna count families and children, went very well. The lifeguarding training program is the, the next area you wanna talk about. So last week, if you recall, I reported last cow, we were moving through this lifeguarding training. Last week, we had two information sessions and yesterday, we had our wet interview or our ability testing in the water. So that went very well, last year, last week combined, we had 32 people participate in the information sessions. On Sunday at 8:00 AM, we had 19 people show up for the ability testing. At the end of the day, we sat down with around seven or eight of those people and said, you know, moving through this process, it's going to be, it's going to be very challenging and it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough and difficult and, you know, some of the abilities that you have are very good, but there's some areas you need to work in and you need to consider whether you have the time to commit to learning these skills as we move forward because the timeframe we're working in is fairly narrow. And it was well-received, some people opted to, to not return, some other people decided that they're going to commit this time and spend the next two weeks using our pool and receiving some instruction to get to the level so they can pass the first certification. Overall, like I said, it was well-received again, good, positive comments. Some people have a new realization of how hard it is to be a lifeguard and some of those techniques. And just an interesting note is. And just an interesting note as well, we were contacted on Friday by the B.C.R.P.A., B.C. Recreation and Parks Association. So they're very interested in what we're doing. They have a panel set up for October's AGM meeting to discuss this topic, not what we're doing, but in general, how to recruit in the aquatic industry. It's a challenge that most municipalities are having. And they've invited us to sit on the panel and just discuss our success or just discuss the process we're going through with the other communities so they can determine whether it's useful for them to use this strategy as well or if there's another road that they can go down with it. So it's very interesting. There's a, there's a few people that are anxiously waiting to see how successful we are with this. So it's good. We had our tender for ditch cutting closed. We missed a report with that, but I thought I'd reported out here. It's awarded to Trevor O'Dwyer for fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars per cut. And this is to cut the ditches on our four highway entrances into the city. I don't have the highways written down, but it's the four main entrances into the city. Some other interesting items to highlight, we have a number of recreational camps coming up, as seen in our report. Darcy has provided some interesting parks statistics as far as hazard trees and boulevard cleaning and bedding plants. Also included some interesting information. Matt has provided some EV station updates, the EV stations are complete, and some costing and funding that we're gonna receive. And just the last item, I guess, is our strat planning update. We're working through our cemetery expansion and we're still, we're still working on the application with the ministry. It's very inclusive and we're working through the geo-planning and we're getting now into more of a layout, just getting into how it's going to be laid out or the minimum information required by the ministry so we can move that application forward. That's all I have.
Thank you, Shirley.
Yeah, just regarding the EV stations, I know we don't have an abundance of electric vehicles and, but we could have. And I'm just wondering what the rest of council's thoughts are on setting fees. Is this something that I don't wanna be looking at in hindsight down the road going, oh, we should have done something at the beginning? I mean, we're not charging for this. So I don't know what it costs to charge an electric vehicle, but at this stage, the city's paying for it, right? So if someone charges. So I'm wondering if we should be directing staff to set fees on using those charging stations? Or even looking at what does it cost to put in some mechanism to charge to use those stations?
Okay, Jim?
Through your worship, the traditional way in which that's done is a metering system. So it is coin or credit card operated at the station. But the infrastructure for that is quite costly. We could bring you figures on that. We haven't proceeded on that until we see whether there's any use of them, because it would be a big investment in, in infrastructure that potentially wouldn't have a payback.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, I, I don't, no idea on the amounts of hydro that's consumed, but I do know that in the state of California, that they have said that if everyone had electric cars plugged in, that they tie electrical grid would be required to support it. So it must be fairly significant. But of course, there's a lot of cars and a lot of people in California. But anyway, maybe we should monitor to see if it's used, because, but anyway, what's your pleasure? What do you want to, does it be flat or?
I guess, but I guess to add direct staff to monitor it then to see, you know, if any flags do come up, because, I mean, I would hate to think down the road that we say, oh, my goodness, we weren't watching that and look what it's cost. So, so direct staff, I guess, to monitor it and keep us updated if any red flags should arise.
Okay. What makes the Challenger Sports British Soccer Camp British?
What makes it British?
Do you bring some soccer players from Britain in?
Yeah, I believe they're European soccer players. There are.
Are Canadian soccer players not good enough?
We used to have Uvic, they used to run our camp. And unfortunately, scheduling, Uvic was facilitating the camp on their schedule, which didn't necessarily meet our schedule. So we had a difference there a couple of years ago. And we were outsourcing and Challenger Sports was already operating in Shetland. And we contacted them to see if they were interested in extending that to Dawson Creek.
Just for council, we had, had some, some of us received some comments about our hanging bastards, which I passed on when, as part of Duncan's baptism of fire, when the rest of senior staff were at a, at a meeting. But I have, it's not intentional, but I say, if you're in Grand Prairie or Fort St. John, have a look. Okay, have a look. But on the, on the positive side, the, that garden at mile zero, all the gardens at mile zero, excellent. But that new one, that's going to, I honestly, sincerely believe that's gonna be a major tourist attraction. You know, people, word of mouth, we should really take some photos of that and use it as a tourism piece, because it's, I have drawn attention to it, to people. But just talking to people casually who are there is pretty impressive. And I, I think that's, gonna be money well-invested, yeah.
We have strong skills in our horticultural.
Yeah, absolutely. It shows, yeah, the selection and stuff and layout. I think it's gonna be a real asset to the community, yeah. Any other comments? Yes, Shirley?
This is probably not the right place, but you just triggered my memory when you said parks and rec. But I do believe our, the unveiling of the flags that are going on Eighth was just this past week. And staff will be starting putting them up on Tuesday. So you wanna see a tourist attraction, they are gorgeous, so.
The art gallery ones.
The art gallery ones, yeah, so.
Yeah, the city sponsored that.
So you triggered, triggered my memory when you said how beautiful the gardens were, the boulevards down.
What is the anniversary that's been celebrated? Thirtieth? Thirtieth anniversary, yeah. Good, no, good, yes, council members?
And I also saw the poetry downtown the other day.
Oh, yes, sure. Good, yeah, I knew she would start a work on that. Thank you very much.
Your worship?
Yes, sorry.
Just one comment before Duncan leaves. As he, I'm not going to comment ever on personnel matters, but you're probably aware, there's been some Facebook traffic about the high turnover rate at the Aquatic Center. And it is similar to much Facebook traffic. It's OMG, we've got a fiscal gap. Everybody has a fiscal gap. OMG, we've got potholes. Everybody has potholes. OMG, we have a high staff turnover rate in our aquatic center. Everybody has a high turnover, staff turnover rate in our aquatic center, so.
Yeah, sure. OMG, I immediately went to a beer.
Gosh.
Isn't there a beer with a? MGV, MGV.
OMG, I could use an M.
All right, can I have a motion to recess to a closed meeting? Duncan Melton moves. Second, so we'll recess and then move to closed.